All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Gig Harbor Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meeting on Tuesday, September twenty twentieth, twenty twenty-two. We'll be reviewing more applications today, so I'll pass it over to you, Josh, for roll call.
Thank you. Let's see. Sue Brighton. Janey Maton. James Carr. Here. Jenny Wellman.
Yeah.
Mary Demarest.
Here.
And Stephanie Lyle.
Yeah.
And then I have Lindsay Stover has not joined us yet. Um, okay, so I I will do a quick overview of the process, but before I get into that, let's go ahead and do we have three applicants that weren't able to join us this last week, so I'll let them each give a little three-minute presentation on their proposal, and then you can ask your questions if we need to, and then we'll jump into the discussion. So Pat's with us to go first.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Pat Schmidt, and I'm with the Gig Harbor Veterans State Committee. We are now just into our fifth year for the Gig Harbor Veterans State Committee, Gig Harbor Veterans Day. And I think most of you are aware of this event, and I think a lot of you have joined us. And as you know, there's a we have about three hundred veterans that come to this event, and there is very special to to their to themselves and to their families. So last year, last two years, COVID years, so we actually had an outdoor event at uptown and which was unique. Robin Denson, two years ago, was our emcee, and then last year was Greg Copland, and he will be our emcee going forward from that from going from this point going forward. And last year, again, yeah, it was just remarkable, and we had one of our veterans say that he hadn't been out for eighteen months, and this is the first event he went to and how special it was for him. So so it really means something to our veterans, and and it really shows the respect and honor that we give to our veterans that we do an event specifically for them. And we don't just include veterans in this event. It really is a community event. We include our the kids. Our schools are included because they do our the placemats. We include are the the VFW, the PTSD Foundation, American Legion is involved, the Eagles, and then we have all of our sponsors. We have Chaney Foundation, we have, gosh, get to our poster, Rotary, Kiwanis, Penmet Parks, Herensky, and Gig Harbor Antique Air. They all are helping us make this be a Gig Harbor event that we are all proud of. And this is actually something that that we've always actually wanted the city of Gig Harbor to help us with, too. So now, I think, our opportunity to do that, and we will be this is going to be on a Saturday in twenty twenty-three, so we will be encouraging our people coming to spend the night in Gig Harbor, to enjoy going to the museum, coming downtown to look at our veteran banners, which we're very proud of that we do, and we've we help support. And then, of course, we'll be sending out links to all of our places to go and to restaurants and to places to visit. So and of course, to go shopping. So we still do have five in our local area that are World War Two veterans, so we honored them specifically because this really is our heart. These are these are our people. These are the people we want to support. So so it's a remarkably bad every year is a little bit different, and we want to make sure that Gig Harbor supports our veterans in the way that they should be, which is respect and honor. So we're just looking for the city to help support us in this in this opportunity. So and at the end of the day, it's it's a good day for Gig Harbor, and it's a good day for all of us. So we're looking for for the support of Gig Harbor, the city of Gig Harbor. So thanks. I hope that was less than three minutes. I'm a fast talker, too. So any questions?
Any follow-up questions from the committee? All right. Well, thanks, Pat.
Okay. Do I do I log off, then?
I will transfer you over to the attendees, so you can still stay on the meeting.
Perfect. Thanks. I appreciate that. Bye, everybody. Appreciate it.
I thank you.
Uh, next up is going to be Lua from the Asian Pacific Cultural Center as soon as I get her promoted. Hi, Lua. Can you hear me? Okay. I see you on there. It looks like you're muted still.
It should be in your lower left-hand corner, or you can also use the space bar to unmute yourself. You have to hold it down while you talk, though.
Oh, oh, I think we lost her there.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna bring Janet over to talk about the quilters promotion, then we'll see if we can get Lua back on. Oh, I think we have Lua now. Oh, there you are. Okay. All right. We'll go. We'll go with Lua, and then we'll do Janet next.
Well, good afternoon, respected members of the advisory committee. Thank you for allowing me to speak now. I'm Falway Napritchard, Executive Director of Asia Pacific Culture Center. We apply for ten thousand two hundred dollars from your lodging tax funds for next year, twenty twenty-three, to support our third annual Chusak Festival to be held at the Scancy Park on September thirty, twenty twenty-three. I know in our application, we mentioned twenty September twenty-fourth, but we learned a valuable lesson this year of not to have a back-to-back event, big event. So next year, we want it to be at least one week apart to help us all to maintain good health and good energy to do a successful event. So in twenty twenty, we applied for funds to present our very first Chusak in Gig Harbor at the Scancy Park in twenty twenty-one. We got rained on heavily and was not able to move forward with it. In twenty twenty-one, we applied for funds to do our second annual this year. We missed to check a certain box. We were not approved, and we wrote a letter to beg for our misunderstanding, and we got approved for five thousand. Thank you very much. So this year, we presented on September eleven. We were very successful with our event. There were nearly five hundred new people that we've never seen before from Gig Harbor, plus two hundred performers of our own and staff and volunteers. So at the park, seven hundred people were there. People who actually attended our event. They enjoyed our performances, our culture booths, and the food. This number did not count those who actually stopped on the streets, and there were so many, and looked and appreciated that the park was filled with good action. We also enjoyed our time presenting. Everyone we talked to afterwards and during the event truly enjoyed being with us that day. We truly believe the future of this event in Gig Harbor will bring many, many more to the park, gathering with great positiveness, great diversity, great kindness, and loving mixing together. We are asking for only sixty percent of our budget for this lodging tax funding, and we beg for your approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions from committee members? All right. I don't see any additional questions, so thank you for joining us.
Jenny has a question.
Jenny has a question.
Yeah. Hi, thank you so much. I think this was a beautiful thing. My question is, I came to the festival, but I couldn't get there till two, and it was pretty much wrapped up. So are you gonna run it for the full five hours next year, or will it just be a shorter timeframe?
Yes, we can. We want to do that. Well, that's what we learned that we needed to to do that. Yeah.
Yeah, wonderful. And I would have I would have loved to tasted more food.
Yeah, because it's the first time we've done it at Gig Harbor. There were a lot of unknowns. But we learned a lot, like I said, and so, yeah, you can expect big things.
Yeah, if the performances can be spread out, that would be great.
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Janet, you're up next, then. Are you able to unmute Janet?
There you go. How's that?
There you go. Good.
Okay, I'm with Gig Harbor Quilters. We are a quilting guild that has been around for about twenty-five years here in the here in the city and in that local area. We support our main purpose is we support our local community with quilts, usually three to four hundred a year, quilts that go to foster children and NICU babies in the hospital and oh, my brain's not working. We do a lot for cancer patients for when they are being treated to keep them warm during their treatments. So this is the purpose is to support our community that way. Our main money maker quilter extremely expensive. An average small quilt actually runs about three hundred dollars in materials, and most of that is supplied by the members themselves, because we the guild itself does not have the money for that. Our biggest money maker is our quilt show, and this is our fifth year of doing it. We were not able to do it during the two years of COVID. As we not have have it outdoors because of the quilts. It's this year, it's going to be at this current year, it's going to be in October at Pioneer Elementary, and we are hoping to do the same location next year, as it looks to be very promising. Our normal budget is about five thousand dollars, and we only take in during the course of the year with small little that we do to earn money of about ten. So it's very important for us to have the money to support the community. Our quilt show brings in last time we kept track, we had about four hundred and twenty people coming in, and we did not do very much advertising. Quilters are a very unique group in that we love to go on what we call quilt hops, and we will go from shop to shop. There'll be three or four people in a car, or there'll be four or five cars, and people will go and hit maybe four or five quilt shops in the area. And if there's a quilt show, that's usually the focus. Gig Harbor being this wonderful place to come visit. We anticipate quite a few people staying in the area at the hotels, but definitely many people will come in from around this everywhere around the state. We have advertised to all thirty-five shops within the state and about fifteen in Northern Oregon and a few in Idaho as we get people traveling around for these. So we expect a lot of attention coming into the area, especially the restaurants, because a lot of people will be driving in. They'll spend two or three hours, and then they may go to other local shops around the area. We also have a quilt shop here in Gig Harbor, who has been very involved in helping us with the advertising. So we've advertised in the Gig Harbor Living Local Magazine and have already received a lot of response from that. So we're hoping that that's going to bring in more business. But each year, we expand and hope to make it. Our goal is to get up to maybe six hundred attendees a year. And our big concern right now financially is we need new poles and stands to hang these quilts. They can be very heavy, and a new set is just over ten thousand dollars. The ones we had been using were wooden, and we just decided they are not safe for the public. And so we needed to come up with something new. This current year, we are just renting them, and that's seventeen hundred to twenty-two hundred a year, depending on how many quilts we hang. So we're hoping you guys can help us out with this. We'll definitely be giving it back to the community. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Any any follow-up questions there?
Actually, yes, I do have one, Janet, and I apologize if I missed it. But is this a is this a one-day event, or is it multiple days?
It's two days. All day to set up, and it will be on. It's always on two days, usually for five hours on one day and six hours on the other day.
Okay, good. Oh, I see that now in your your application. But yeah, sorry if I missed that when you were talking, but just just curious. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And and where is it held again? Uh, before it was held at the Gig Harbor Yacht Club this year, it's going to be at Pioneer Elementary. They have a much ability for us, and we can make this show larger, which is always our goal. Nice. And and does are the quilts featured? Are these people from the local area that have made quilts, or is this like an open jury? It's not. All of the quilts that are being displayed for that for the show are all made by members of our guild. We also have quilts that are are for sale. Again, everything is made by the people in the guild, but it's not mission. It's just a and a it's a great culture, but it's really an art show. It's more about the modern quilting and and it's really unique. I hope you all come and attend. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Janet. That is all the presentations that we have. So now we're ready to launch into the discussion about the funding levels, and just a quick recap for all those that are attending in the audience. So the way this process works is the committee is going to discuss now which proposals they think should be funded and what amount they should be funded at. These the committee's decision will be a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council will look at the recommendation and then decide whether or not they're going to accept the recommendation and fund the grant or not. So it's kind of a two-stage process from here. Council probably won't be making their decision until later in the year, probably in November, or maybe as late as December. So that that's kind of the timeline for what we're looking at. And just to recap really quickly, too, as soon as I find it here. I'm gonna pull up the application, just so everyone can remember what the criteria was that was listed on the application. So on the application, we've listed the city of City of Gig Harbor Lodging Tax Advisory Committee may consider some of the following: the estimate the estimated amount of lodging tax fund available for the coming year, thoroughness and completeness of the proposal, percent of proposal request to the event or facility propulsion, budget, and overall revenues, percent of increase over prior year of City of Gig Harbor lodging tax-funded proposals, if any, projected economic impact within City of Gig Harbor in particular, projected overnight stays in Gig Harbor lodging establishments, the applicant's financial stability, and the applicant's history of tourism promotion success. In a nutshell, the the purpose of these grants is to try to attract as many visitors to stay in Gig Harbor overnight or coming from fifty miles away or more. So with that, I think we're ready to launch into uh, the commission's discussion. I'm gonna pull up the summary of the applications that we have, so we'll have that on the screen for you to go through. That right here. And at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to the committee and probably Seth to kind of guide us through each of these applications and talk about what you want to recommend for funding amounts on each.
See, yeah, I was gonna say Jenny's got her hand up, so she's got something to add before.
So I'm back to a point that I made in the last meeting. And your number one bullet point, which is the fund available for for use for these grants. So if I'm if I'm looking correctly at the fund amount available for the end of twenty twenty-two, we're talking about one point six million dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, yep, there's quite a surplus right now.
Right. So again, if we funded all of these close to a million dollars, that would leave six hundred thousand in that fund, which is great. But if we continue to fund at this level, we won't have enough money. So you know, typically, we're saying we we bring in, we're thinking we're gonna bring in four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in lodging tax funds this year. That won't even pay for the City of Gig Harbor's application. So I just want to make that point. Okay, thank you.
And I want to follow on that in in basically just saying that I look at this as recovery year. So investing surplus funds in all of these organizations that all their efforts are going to be, you know, quite remarkable in terms of reaching all kinds of different audiences that we may not reach with our typical advertising efforts. So I think this this could be a very positive way if we can fully fund a lot of these organizations. We can kind of look at this as a recovery year and then realize that next year, we're not going to have as much fun. So I fully support keeping some money in the in the fund, but also investing in some of these organizations that are working hard to get the word out around the state and the country. So.
I think those are both really good points, and Stephanie, I particularly like your your part about, you know, calling it a recovery year. I think, you know, and just a recommendation, remember, this is a whole group, so I don't think I'm hijacking this at all. But I do think that we look at it as, you know, getting closer, but then we have to look at how we taper it off, and I would suggest that, you know, we kind of we play catch-up to get back to what we what we think it's going to be in about five or six years. And then that way, also, yeah, there's a recovery portion, but then it's it's gonna be gentler as we have to move back, and you know, it's gonna be lesser amounts. And, you know, I think we also have to consider that in future years, we're gonna have more organizations coming and applying for these. So you know, I don't know how much it'll grow by, but I think we have to factor that in as well, so we can say it's a five-year plan. But it might have to adjust from there and even be a little bit more abrupt. So any other comments before I think we start working through this? Since I haven't sat in on this before, can't really look to you guys how it's been done. I know we talked a bit about what do we want this to look like next year? You know, as far as having something that's more set, so we're looking at the the scale and rating in a similar fashion. I know we've all kind of gone through and done that, so we're really relying on feedback and making open suggestions, you know, in these things, and just, you know, don't don't be too sensitive. But but also just, you know, be nice, and let's let's talk it out if there's any big discrepancies.
Well, I think just one one thing that's, I think, really helpful to kind of get out there is that the amounts that are awarded are not a reflection on the value that that the city or this committee sees in these organizations. The awards have to be based on the amount, the the number of people that are coming, the the amount of revenue that's being brought into the city from fifty miles away. So it's not it's not a decision that's based on whether or not you think there's value in the event itself. But it's based more on those other factors.
I agree, Josh. That's a really good point that you said. I'm glad you went over again the criteria. I think important for everybody to know, because, you know, there's so much emotion involved. I think with all of these and the passion for them, of course, we don't want anybody to to think that we think less than what what you requested. We're just, you know, trying to find a balance across all these. So Katrina, I see you're on. I'm not used to you being so quiet. Do you have anything to add?
I will be very quiet today out of respect for the the committee members who are the most valuable people here. Laura Pettit was not able to join today, and so I won't say I'm lurking, because that continues to be something worse than what I mean, but I will be here in case anyone has questions or you need me, council member.
Okay. All right. I guess my one recommendation would be, you know, it's definitely a topic for us in our last meeting, but on the City of Gig Harbor operations, that definitely being a big one there. And we talked about this a little bit of, you know, how much play do we have here? Of course, council has to go back and approve all these things, but I think, you know, in a way, that takes a big portion of this. So I'd like to hear some feedback on the City of Gig Harbor.
Well, let me start. Because I probably have I probably have the strongest opinion. But last year, the request was four ninety, at least that's what I have, and maybe maybe I'm it says for what's it say, four ninety-five there, but I and I I wasn't comfortable with that last year again. So the five fifty-two to me is really like, yikes. And again, I just want to not on Laura, not on any particular person or anything, but the value that I know we as hoteliers have received in the last couple of years is just not there. I mean, as far as what what we usually have received, as far as just that tear-off map never happened, the visitors guide never happened. And I think I was saying, we're not in the Washington State Visitors Guide. Why? I don't know, but we're Gig Harbor's not even listed in there. Those are just little things. But for me, the value, I just I I'm not I'm not seeing it there. So for to just go ahead and fund that, and it's it's way over. I'm at the top for me. So as far as, you know, and I don't know if it's mostly salaries, and then we when we didn't, what happened to the money that we had allocated there? Josh, like, what was what was actually used or funded? Can you tell us that?
From the city's budget this year?
Yeah, because we didn't was didn't we have money in there for the trolley that did we have to fund?
Yeah, the money's in there for the trolley. That's part of the four ninety-five that's there, and that money was not spent this year. So that's part of what we're estimating is gonna be in the beginning fund balance for this year.
Okay.
There's a number of things that probably didn't get done out of that amount that are just rolling over into the next year's LTAC availability.
That's correct. Any any unspent funds out of the four ninety-five that was allocated to the city will remain in the LTAC fund. It will not go to general fund or anything else, so that will be in there. And our finance director is on vacation right now, but next week I can ask him if I don't know if you're meeting again soon, but we can provide that information by email to the committee.
Does wouldn't that make a difference if there's fifty or a hundred that didn't get used? Then can we reduce right off the top? Can we assume that we can carry that over? Or how's that work?
We would have to we would have to like recommend that amount based off of what the plan would be for twenty twenty-three. Yeah, it doesn't it kind of it goes into the pool, right? That's where our one point six million is. And so it's gone back into there. That's why we have such a surplus.
It has already. It has. So all the funds that we didn't that we designated last year but didn't get sent out, for instance, I'm trying to think what else did we approve that didn't happen? Can you think of something, you guys? You know, didn't happen because it didn't happen because of the weather or something, then those went back in already into that one point six?
They they have not been put back in already. The the ending balance that we're estimating is an estimate that the finance director has put together as a projection. So we haven't gone through line by line and said, we're not spending this money, so this money is going back into the fund. It's just the finance director preparing his best guest on guess on what he thinks is gonna be there based on, you know, what we have been able to do and what we haven't been able to do. I would say that number is probably a conservative number, and the ending fund balance probably will be higher than what you see in that report. But until until the end of the year, until, you know, February of next year, when we start reconciling all of the what actually was spent, we won't know for sure what that number is.
So I personally, I can't vote on it when I don't have that information, and I don't I don't know what we're getting for that. It's just it's it's impossible for me to say. So I think I didn't get to vote last. I didn't vote on it last year, and I probably won't be able to again. So there.
It seems like this. We've had this every year, and all we do is we try to reduce that, and it doesn't happen. So I don't even know if we should spend any more time talking about it. I think that my opinion is is that we it never changes. So whatever the city asks for, we usually end up, we we disagree about it, and it'll go back to committee or back to council, and it comes back, and this is what they want. So I don't know if we just keep going round and round, or we just say, might as well just approve that one, what they're asking.
I'm gonna jump in, because when we looked at this at the budget for this year, right off the top, there was a hundred and twelve thousand dollars earmarked for the miscellaneous, which was the grant program, as I understand from our discussion. So if you subtract a hundred and twelve thousand dollars from five fifty-two right off the mark, you're about four forty. So that's a lot closer to something. But I I mean, we've had these discussions. We even were concerned about an amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a couple of years ago, as I recall, and what was actually getting funded. So I just think that it does bear a close look, and it is important to to be judicious about this, because these are public funds, and, you know, it's our job to make sure that we're careful. So just know that from the from the get-go. But I do recommend removing that one twelve from that budget right off the top, because I think it's a misrepresent. Well, it's not a super clear representation. I don't think it's. not a super clear representation. I don't think it's intentionally missing, misleading. So.
Are you saying from the, um, from the five fifty-two?
Correct.
Yeah. But again, what are we getting? What, uh, what am I as a property getting for the five fifty-two? What, what are we as a, a committee or a city getting besides digital marketing? I, I don't, I don't know. And.
Sorry for interrupting you. I'm just curious, are the funds that roll over still allocated like we're talking about for the trolley? Are those still set aside for the trolley? Is that going to be going to the trolley? Or does that just go into that fund and now it can be used towards whatever?
It just goes back into the fund and can be used for whatever. So the next year's trolley is part of the five fifty-two request for the city.
I will note that we've met with the, um, Pierce Transit and they're still going through a number of issues with the trolleys not being ADA compliant, which may cause some additional funding requirements from the city to partner with Pierce Transit. In addition to that, they have indicated, uh, I believe a twenty percent increase to the cost of the trolley over what was originally. Or what was our last year for the trolley. So there is a pretty significant cost increase for the trolley that should be taken to account in the city's application.
So can I just verify that the one twelve at the bottom of the page on our hotel multi motel fund? Spreadsheet that is for, um, that was what we allocated for, uh, grants for last year. Is that correct?
Yeah, that number should include the grants from last year. It's, it's a little bit difficult to, to kind of. That, that sheet is for the entire lodging tax fund. It's not necessarily just for the city's portion of it. So any expenditure that comes out of lodging tax fund that's included in that. So.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. Yep.
Hey, Josh, I also have a spreadsheet up too. Just want to check one thing. Will you click on your six twenty box at the bottom of, of twenty twenty-two?
Uh, yes, that is not, those don't add up to that. Six twenty is the total that we allocated last year. So, um, we had some other applications that didn't reapply this year. So that's why it won't add up.
Okay. And that's not as important. We don't have to change any of those numbers, but okay. I was just checking to make everything else look right. And that's how I created my score sheet. So.
I should, I should have made that clarification. Yes, that the total for that column for amount funded in twenty-two is not a total of the column. It is the actual total that we allocated last year.
All right. And Josh, another question for you. Sorry, a lot of these are coming up now, uh, after having our meeting last week. So I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm going to. Um, what about, um, how, how do I say this? Um, no, never mind. I'm not going to ask. Just keep going. Sorry. Um, I don't have the best to say it. Um, so let me see. Um, I think this is, this would be, it's more of a, less than a question, more of a comment, but I think, you know, when we did have a chance to interview Laura a bit, I'll call it afterwards, right? We asked her a lot of questions. Um, when we went over the Gig Harbor operations piece for this. And, you know, I've been asked the question of, you know, if you had to cut on this budget, what would it be? And I think, you know, even making a suggestion of a, a lesser amount, if the group is not, um, you know, happy with that amount or what the, what the, you know, ROI is, then we should, you know, voice that. I don't know how much of a difference you guys want to, would want to make down from that four ninety-five. But I think it's worth a conversation for the council having that recommendation. Doesn't mean you have to chop it in half, but you know, let it become a discussion point. Um.
And so I'll, I'll just echo that a little bit too. That, that is, that's a fine way to approach this because what's going to happen in October is the city departments are all going to have to go to council and present their budgets. And that includes Laura's tourism department. So she's going to go before council and say, this is the amount of money that we're asking for, for my department, and this is why it's justified. And at that point, council can look at that and they can say, yes, this department is justified for five hundred and fifty thousand. And if LTAC has only recommended, you know, an amount less than that, then council can come back to LTAC and say, we've reviewed the department budget with Laura and we feel that, you know, this five hundred and fifty thousand is the correct amount. And council can make that decision if that's what they decide to do. So ultimately what you recommend for the amount of this is, is helpful for council, but it's really going to be based on, you know, what council and the, the department feels like it needs to have in there. I see Katrina's got her hand raised too.
Thank you. Um, I've had a conversation with at least two of you regarding some concerns regarding the, the city's use of the lodging tax, tax funds. And noting that I'm relatively new to this role, I do hope and I appreciate all of your the feedback that I'm hearing. And I, it sounds like you may have gone through this in previous years, but um, I'm committed to, you know, sitting down with anyone who would like to talk about this further, provide, uh, further insight so that we can ensure that what we're doing as a city uh, is beneficial to all those involved, um, in LTAC. And I really do mean that. So thank you to those that have reached out. And, um, if there are general concerns of what we're not doing or what we're not doing well enough, um, I would like to know about those so that I can do my job and ensuring that we're providing the services that we are, um, saying that we're going to provide. Thank you.
So Josh, another clarifying question. Gosh, sorry. Um, so do we go this, go down this line by line? Or do we kind of give it a, do we plug in in numbers and then all voting at the end? Or do we vote line by line?
The way that it usually works best is to go line by line and, and get consensus from the group. And then uh, I'll keep track of it here on the sheet in real time. And then when we get to the end, then you can do a, a vote as a group. Um, if you're all happy with the numbers you've come up with. Okay. I don't think it's necessary to do a motion and a second and a vote on each.
Okay, cut. All right. Just wanted to double check.
Yes.
Um, all right. Does anybody want to make a recommendation? If not, I can. And knowing that we, we will have a second go at these probably. Um, I'm going to just put out, um, four seventy-five. What are people's thoughts there? It's coming close to it, but it is, is tightening it up a little bit.
I'm okay giving them the full amount.
I support four seventy-five.
I support four seventy-five.
I support four seventy-five.
Sounds like we have consensus there.
All right. Well, for now, we've got one big chunk done. I think the rest of them will be a lot more fun. Um, should we go back up? We'll start back up at the top then, Josh, and go to the Asia Pacific Cultural Center.
I recommend five thousand for this.
And I would agree on that. I think, do they have one in Tacoma? Is that what we were saying? There's, is that what happened this year? They had one in Tacoma the day before or something. Was that it? What she was talking about? But there is one in Tacoma. That's, it was very close to in dates and stuff, but.
Yeah, they were going to separate them by a week now instead of.
Yeah, yeah.
One after the other.
But I would agree on five for them.
I support the full amount. Honestly, it's very time consuming and labor intensive to put on a festival like that. And, um, it's not like they are proposing that they're going to go over in their budget. So, um, I personally support the ten, ten twenty or ten two hundred.
I agree with Stephanie. I misread that for a second. I thought they were requesting five, but that was last year. I think if they're going to go into year two and anticipate to grow and understand the growing pains from the previous year, let's like run with it.
Yeah, I'd like to see the full amount on that. I talked to somebody who attended it and they said, wow, what a great, what a great event. And could see a lot of growth potential in the event.
That's right. I think that's good feedback. I would agree on the, um, I think that it is going to grow, um, and learning more about it. I definitely want to attend myself. So it sounds very, very cool. But any, any reservations? I know Janay put out five thousand. If you had any.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Did she say though, that was how much of her budget? Did, did I hear that correctly? I can't get into these anymore, the applications. I don't know why.
I can tell you too. It is, um, it is sixty percent of the event budget, but only a small portion of the operations budget. And it serves about seven hundred people.
Hmm. Yeah. Well, I, I, I would say five is fine with me, but you guys, there you go.
And it just for a frame of reference, I, I'm running numbers at the same time. And, you know, if everybody got the full amount, we'd still be at nine hundred and five thousand dollars, six hundred and sixty. So we're not going over the million dollar mark by any means.
Yeah. Yeah. The other thing I would recommend as we go through this, um, is that, you know, especially as we're starting, we're just getting our flow down. Hopefully we'll, we'll get a flow. Is that it's always better to kind of come back and bump some things up too. So I'm okay with not saying fully funded on a lot of these and come back and see where we want to adjust. That might be better to work through a little bit faster, maybe not always do the full amount depending on the case. And then we can come back and, you know, say like, well, you know, I feel a little bit differently about this one. Can we bump this up? You know, is it five hundred? Is it a thousand? And so on. Just want to throw out another suggestion there.
All right. I'll have this one at fully funded. Do we want to leave it at that?
Josh, that was going to be my other ask is because, you know, obviously when we're having differences here with like the ten-two and five thousand recommendations, is this a bit of a negotiation? Because it's not a vote, right? So maybe what we're trying to do is find a happy medium. So maybe let's put it down as.
Nine thousand. Just I, I'm a, I'm a believer on maybe just not unless it's just completely, um, I mean, I don't know, but maybe not.
Yeah. One of the things I look at in all of these budgets is, um, their expenses versus income. And when their income is, you know, ten thousand dollars more than their expenses, what they're really asking LTAC to do is to fund other stuff. Because what they're doing is a fundraiser. And while I totally get that, um, and I am in support of a lot of these events that are fundraisers. Um, there are some, some things on services that are provided by applicants that are operating at a deficit. And they are very much for the community good. So I want to look at that aspect too. And I think on going to the next one, the farmer's market is one of those where they're asking for twenty thousand, but their actual budget is like twenty-four. And I honestly think we should fund the whole thing.
I'll agree. Twenty thousand.
Okay. Are we moving on from the cultural center then? I have it at ten-two fully funded, but.
I, I think we should move along.
All right. We can revisit that one if we need to. Um, waterfront farmer's market.
I actually put them down for thirty-four thousand, which is more than what they asked for, but they operate at a fourteen thousand dollar deficit. So, um, but that's a negotiable thing too. So, um, I, I would fully fund them personally and more.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree at twenty.
That is fine.
So we have the majority at twenty, it looks like.
Yep. I think, I'm thinking I need to not vote on this.
Yeah, I think so too. I think, I think in the past, you guys were out of the room when we were voting on stuff. So it's, it's a little awkward.
Well, Heidi was out of the room for sure. I just didn't vote. I understand.
Okay, gotcha.
Don't worry, we're tough. Yeah.
And for girls night out?
I propose the full ten.
And, and hopefully we can get some overnight stays from it too. It would be lovely. It would be lovely.
All right. Gig Harbor Boat Shop operations.
Oh. I also recommend the full amount.
And I can't, I can't recommend five to ten at the most.
Why Sue?
Why? Um, I think we funded a lot of, a lot of money and funds towards them. And again, it's something people can go to, but I don't see it bringing in people from over fifty miles away. That's, that's why.
And I agree. I would say no, no more than ten.
I do think that it's a, a place that a lot of people come to, kind of like folks from here that go up to Port Townsend. Um, you may just go up for the day, but you're going to have to see specific things. And I think the boat shop has a draw that is unlike anything else that we offer in the harbor. So, um, you know, and operations are operations and it's a fully uh, acceptable aspect of, uh, what LTAC funds can do. So, you know, we can make a request of them to, you know, spread the net a little farther, but, um, you know, like, I know how hard it is to keep a nonprofit going. So I fully support, um, a full funding of that while we have the funds.
I do as well. Um, again, as Stephanie pointed out, you know, this is a recovery year for all of us. And now they've got the house next door where they may be able to utilize and, um, promote some different kinds of things that could bring people in for overnight.
We, we have a couple at twenty-five and a couple at ten.
Maybe we could meet at fifteen.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Fifteen?
I go fifteen.
Uh, canoe and kayak racing team paddlers cup. Uh, they requested twelve this year and we funded five last year. Um, they actually reached out to me last weekend so that they intended to submit an application for the Narrows Challenge for another seventy-five hundred. Um, I told them I'd let you guys know that they intended to do that, but, um, there's no obligation to fund that event as well. I don't think that event has even occurred yet. And I think that's the first year it was supposed to happen is this year. So that additional request is out there for that group. Um, they didn't meet the deadline. They didn't submit an application. So there, there's no obligation to consider it. I just told them I'd let you know that that's there.
I thought would be fully funded because they're, if they're really, you know, planning a second event, then I think it gives them, you know, I guess the opportunity compared to the five thousand or for the request of twelve, it brings them up. I think though it'll be successful. I mean, definitely the paddler's cup has been.
And it does bring people into town and stay overnight.
But I think the other event's totally separate, isn't it, Josh? What they're, what they're talking about? Cause it was a separate request last year, I believe.
It was a separate request last year. It, it would be the same contract for us. So as far as the city's concerned, it'll just be one agreement with the, with the club that says, you know, you'll conduct two events and we'll pay you X amount of dollars. So we can consider it that way. If, if, you know, if you as the committee want to consider it, um.
Well, I have a question about that. Um, that other event that you're talking about wasn't last year, the first year that they did that?
I think, I think it happens this month, and I think this is the first time that they're doing it. So I don't think we have any data on it at all.
Oh, I thought they did it last year. Okay.
I think they did it last year and October, October eighth is the second one.
Oh, okay.
And do we know how the first one did in terms of bringing people in town? Or do we have any data?
I don't have any data on it now. Unfortunately, they didn't turn in an application. So we don't.
Okay, thanks.
I think we need to support this team.
Yeah, I do too. I'd go for twelve.
They bring national attention to our community. I, I would say the full amount to twelve.
Okay, we have, it sounds like we have support for full amount on the paddler's cup. Gig Harbor Film Festival.
I support the full amount on this too. They do bring filmmakers from all over the place.
Um, and I just, can I just go with twenty? Yeah, I'm, I'm going to go with twenty. I know we've given them funds. And Jenny, maybe you, I don't know how involved you still are, but the last couple of years and, and it hasn't happened. Um, and so, um, I think twenty's fair this year. So it's my opinion.
I would support twenty.
Twenty or twenty-five, either way, I think that just her presentation and speaking to what this festival does kind of captures what LTAC is supposed to be doing here in terms of the out of market capture.
I'd agree. And also the multiple night stays, I think are, you know, with this one and many of the other activities or events, those ones really stood out to me a lot because we know that there's a two-day event or three-day event that people are spending the night. So.
And really the only people that spend the night are the filmmakers, to be honest, from my, in our.
And usually we're, and usually we're asked to, to give discounts on those.
Yeah. So again, we have a, it's just a little different perspective. And, um, I appreciate all the nonprofits and their view. That's just, you know, again, as collectors, that's what we see from our perspective. So.
And I'm good with the twenty amount too, because there has been funding without the event in the past years. So I would, I would consider that probably less of an adjustment than being a rebuild kind of a year because there is funding that's been there.
So did, did they have to return the money that was not used? So did, did they have to return the money that was not used because the event didn't happen? Is that back into the fund?
No, I can go ahead on that if I'm allowed to. I don't know if I'm allowed to, but. Um, so the funding that they've got in previous years led to things that they had already paid for. So for example, they had to, we had to pay. I, I had to pay at the time for um, rental of the Galaxy Theater. We didn't use the theater, so that rolls, that rolls over. So really and truly their budgets more than, more than what this is. So, you know, um. And I think the other part of it was to pay for a programmer who programmed in twenty twenty-one for this festival in twenty twenty-two. And um, you helped pay for his fees, I believe. I'm not positive about that, but that's what I'm thinking.
We only reimburse for, for what's spent. Um, but with the film festival, it is for the operations of their organization too, since they are a tourism related organization. So. Um, I think in the past, I don't know. I, I don't think I've seen the receipts from twenty twenty, but I think we may have funded some operational expenses that year.
Yes.
Even though there was no film festival.
Yeah. But Josh, can I ask, since um, you would have had the um, the report that they send in, right? The post-event activity report from them, correct? And from a lot of these, so can I just suggest next year, we get to see those of the ones you have before we, we do this again, because that would be really helpful, I think, to all of us. How'd they spend it? You know, where, you know, when I asked Laura, she said most of them haven't happened, but a lot of them have, right? So that would be helpful. Or Seth, whoever would be doing that for us. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Laura has some from twenty. It's difficult because twenty twenty was the first year we did grants and a lot of events didn't happen. So we didn't get any submissions in twenty twenty-one. Um, and then the twenty twenty-one events. For those applications, I think Laura has some of the reports. But for the events from last year, which are what most of these were funded for the first time, we don't have any data yet because we won't get that until early in twenty twenty-three. So we can do that with like the film festival going back a couple of years, but some of these, I don't think we funded things like the paddler's cup or girls' night out or any of those.
I think, doesn't it say the reporting should be provided immediately after the event or activity?
Uh, the actual reporting of the numbers um, is supposed to be at the, before the first of the, it's before February first, I believe is what the contract says. But they can submit their receipts for reimbursement earlier.
Well, maybe are looking at changing that somehow a little bit earlier. So, I mean, it would make a big difference to me, or I think most of us to look at what, what happened. So, thank you. Yep.
All right. Uh, so I have film festival at twenty. Are we okay on that?
I am.
We want us Veterans Day celebration. They're asking for ten thousand. This is their first year.
I would recommend full funding of that.
I'd say five.
I put down six.
And I, I would go with five. Uh, I mean, it's a wonderful event. Don't get me wrong. It's wonderful and wonderful, but as far as bringing people in. Um, you know, I don't, I, you know, in the activity, because I think they serve them lunch. So it's not like they're going to the restaurants and stuff, but just the that aspect.
Maybe we could look at seventy five hundred. That'd be kind of right in the middle of the two different recommendations.
Yeah, their budget shows that they operate expense wise with the four thousand dollar uh, overage and income. So that's why I recommended six is that would basically bring the budget in balance and um, would still offer them good funding, but I would support seventy five hundred as well.
I would too.
Good with that.
All right, Gig Harbor Quilters requesting five thousand.
I think this is the first application that they've submitted. And um, I do know that quilts do draw a lot of people. So. I, I don't think it's an, an over aggressive ask and I could support the five thousand.
Maybe we, for their first year, maybe don't give them the full amount, but maybe some.
Like three, give them three to start with. So maybe is um, from the application, aren't they trying to pay for stands? Isn't this the year they're trying to pay for new stands? Is that correct?
Yes.
So they may not need this, they might not ask for this much in the next year. And if they're trying to do a one-time thing, that, that will benefit them for the future.
And this isn't even all of that cost.
Right.
Not half of the cost.
Right, right. I've been to the event and it's fabulous. And um, you know, it was very well attended and um, so I would, I would recommend the five thousand.
I would support five thousand.
All right. Um, Seth, are you okay with five thousand on that?
That's good. It's fine.
Gig Harbor Senior Center Shamrock and the Harbor Run and Walk.
So that should have happened last year, right? March? I, I don't know anything about it, but did anybody go or know anything about it? Because they asked for money last year, right?
Yep, five hundred.
Yeah. I mean, I would just say personally a thousand. I, I don't know anybody that went or ran it or came for it, but um. Yeah.
I would support a thousand.
Yeah, I would do a thousand.
Yep.
Okay, sounds like we have consensus on a thousand. Uh, Sportsman's Club Seafood Shoot.
Know anything about that? Have you ever been there for that?
Yeah, I have. Um, there is a number of people there from out of town as um, Dean from the Sportsman's Club uh, was going over that. Um, this is a very competitive shoot, so they're not people just like, there's a few people from Gig Harbor, obviously, that, that shoot and go there, but it is a it's a competition multi-day. Um, they do, of course, they're having seafood there, but that's, that's lunch during the day and maybe some snacking. But they are getting out on the town as well. And uh, that's actually coming up this, this weekend. It's this weekend, it's this weekend. So I encourage you guys to go by, even if you don't know anything about it, but um, definitely brings people in.
I would recommend the full amount, the five thousand.
I'm okay with that. Yeah. I agree.
That would even be one that I know, well, just gonna throw this out here, but you know, we have talked about things where we go a little bit over. And the Sportsman's Club does a lot, I think, in our community when they have opportunities, whether it's been, you know, parking for Race for a Soldier, um, or the Blues Festival that happens there as well. They do a lot to, you know, offer themselves up. So I know they put this one down as the event, but they've got a group of volunteers like you wouldn't believe. So anyways, just, we can keep it at five thousand, but if we were to go back, I would, I would earmark that one.
Okay.
Gig Harbor Yacht Junior Sale Programs.
I would support ten thousand. I think that, that um, these programs bring in people from out of town. I would support ten.
I would go with that with ten. I think it's the first time they've asked, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just looking at their budget and I, I would actually support fifteen. Um, I think that they, they have an amazing program and there are so many kids from various places that participate. So, and I was really impressed with their um, statistics that they were showing where their participants actually came from. That was very good data and it was really well presented. So I think that deserves some recognition.
I like fifteen. I'd go with fifteen.
I would go with fifteen as well.
I could support that.
All right, I think we have consensus at fifteen on that one. Gig Harbor Foundation, there's a couple of asks here, Ralven Bones for two thousand and Summer Sips for six thousand.
Um, believe it or not, we do have people stay here for that. It's quite, and they kind of start from here. So for me, the two thousand's fine. Um, as far as, um, I don't know about the, the cider swig, I just put five. So that was just my vote.
Two thousand sounds fine.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I'd go for that.
I'd also agree on the, the cider swig. I haven't been to that in years, but um, but has been really well attended. I don't know how many people from out of town that are staying in hotels, but, but a pretty big event. Kind of skipping ahead on there a little bit on you, Josh, probably, but I would be good with five or six in this, in this spot.
Yeah, I guess I, I thought that it was that they were applying for cider swig again, but then I realized it's something different because cider swig is actually held in Tacoma now. So.
Oh, I thought. Am I getting it mixed up with the one that's at Samo? What's that?
Well, that was cider swig and it was an amazing event at Zayo Park. And now I understand, and I, I could be wrong, but my understanding was that cider swig was moved into Tacoma.
No, I think it's, I think it's at Uptown, isn't it?
Well, the summer sips is, is at Uptown. Well, anyway, it, this is not for cider swig. I think this is totally different.
So do you know, Laura, is summer sips? And then when is it? When did she say it was gonna be then? Summer sip, is it in the middle of summer?
I can tell you.
So.
No.
Versus wasn't the cider swig later, wasn't it usually now or first?
Yeah, cider swig was like in September, October.
Right, just again, you know, when we need more tourism. So um, I think that was such a great event. So if the summer sips is in the summer. Anyway. What, what is the event that's at Uptown this weekend? Because I know it's the same time as the film festival is going on. Oh.
That is the oh wait, is that it? No. I was just trying to look up this other, the other event.
See if I can find it.
Cider swig this weekend. I do note that we have Julianne um, Istonski raising her hand on the attending side, maybe to provide clarity. I don't know, Josh or council member, so I said if you allow that or not.
Um, yeah, I think normally we don't allow for questions. I'm, I'm okay with it since we're all like searching on our computers and phones. If there's a quicker answer, that would be great.
Well, the summer sips is a July eighth of twenty twenty-three event. So it is in the summer. It's held at Uptown Gig Harbor and it is the craft beverage market. Um, and uh, summer sips focuses on bringing two, five, three and close neighbor libationists together.
Yeah.
So it is different than cider swig.
Yeah, now that I'm looking, cider swig is, is in Tacoma this weekend.
Well, we have Julianne on here. Uh, Julianne, do you wanna add, add a comment?
I, I'll just quickly clarify. Um, we did try to pro- provide quite a few statistics, um, both um, the Shamrock and Run, which you talked about a few minutes ago, um, as to where all of those participants came from. And they actually came from, significant number of them came from far, quite a ways away. But, but last year was the first year of the so, summer sips and we stopped calling it summer swig. It came out of, it was developed basically out of our efforts to try and make sufficient da- uh, dollars for the environmental grant program that has helped fund many of your organizations. Um, Harbor Wild Watch has received funds. Anyway. We tried to do that, uh, and we called it summer swig initially. And we did it during the pandemic. Uh, the two years of the pandemic because we really had to do basically two events in order to even come anywhere near close, having the amount of income to go into that grant program. So we rebranded it last year and called it Summer Sips. We had approximately six hundred people attending and they came from all over. And in your packets, there was uh, graphs in charge showing where the people came from. Some uh, cider swig, we did move to Tacoma because the event became too large and we were unable to find a uh, at a, a place that had adequate parking to make it safe for people to actually participate in the event. So two thousand, uh, two thousand nineteen was the last year that the full event was held at um, Zayo Homestead Park. And e- even though we know there are some people, cider makers um, in particular, coming from four, five, six hours away, staying in Gig Harbor this year. We did not ask for any funds since we moved the event to uh, Tacoma. And hopefully we can bring it back to Gig Harbor, but we logistically need a place where somewhere between fifteen hundred, around fifteen hundred car to two thousand cars can um, park.
Okay, thank you, Julianne. Uh, anybody else have any questions for, before go, go forward? All right, thank you very much.
Can I just say, let's um, think about that too, encouraging the off-season events, you know, and trying to which was good about the swig says it wasn't the middle of summer. So I'm just want to stick with the five thousand for the summer sips for me.
I'd do five thousand.
Five thousand.
Go with that? Yep.
All right, I have a five thousand. Harbor History Museum Marketing Exhibits and Operations.
Uh, well, I'll just kick this off. This one is a, this is a big one to, to swallow. Uh, obviously a huge number. And Stephanie, thank you for taking our questions and flipping it back on you last time. I don't even know where to go, where to start on this one. Um, not that I'm not in support or love what you guys do, but it is a, a very large ask. And so.
I suggest twenty five thousand.
And I could go with that. And, and Stephanie, it's, it's always so hard because you're on here too. And I mean, it's your passion, it's your work. And I, you know, it's not that we don't appreciate it. But when the city already does pay for all the entrance fees, right? There's a certain amount you guys get every year for that, correct?
Uh, it is not a set in stone situation. We currently do not have a contract for the next. We had a contract for five years. That contract is due for renewal, so it is not set in stone.
When does that contract come back to the city, Stephanie?
Well, that's, Josh, I need to talk about that because we need to redraft that for council's review. So, you know, if, if, well, I'm trying to not talk, so.
Sure, no problem. Well, I'll talk. I can, I can talk a bit for you, but I think, you know, obviously that's another conversation, but um, and I can't speak for the council, but I would say if, I, my thought would be if the support has been there like it has, it should renew. I know that doesn't like remove any doubt for you. Um, but they've been, I think, great partners from a city level. It just might not be to this extent with the LTAC funds. Right?
I would certainly like to see more than twenty five thousand. This, you know, Stephanie pointed out and as another nonprofit, I can point out, we're all in recovery mode. Um, and they were hit hard. They were closed for a very, very long time. So they couldn't run events. They couldn't run, you know. It, it's just been a heck of a two and a half years for our businesses and, and nonprofits.
And you know, you know, it's a little bit, a bit frustrating is, is that all these people that got hit hard. Um, we're gonna recover, but the people who, the collectors, we were closed.
You were hit hard as well.
Any money, but we don't get the opportunity to get any relief back from those. So it's a, it's, it kind of gets a little bit, even though, I mean, I'm fully support the Harbor History Museum, former board member. Love it. Want to give them tons of money. I, it, it is principle for me on this that it, it just is, it is frustrating. So I'm, Mary, love you. I'm sorry to argue on this.
It's not an argument. It's just, um, I don't, I don't think twenty five thousand is enough.
But why? Why? What, what's different this year? I mean, there's no entrance fee. So isn't your money all fundraising, right? It's, uh, again, for, for the museum, where, where were the funds coming from before? Um, besides the one event, if maybe she didn't have the one event, I'm just saying. And then if you're not open, to me, the cost should have been way down too. Um, I still had to be open. You know, stay open, no business, but we've had, but we were open. So anyway, and here we are. So um, we, it's not like it was only the nonprofits that were hit.
Oh, I, don't I know that? I deal with, you know, over a hundred businesses down here that were hit real hard.
But we're all, we were all kind of in that same boat. So um, if you know what I'm saying. So, yep, 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 yep. I would recommend going higher than twenty five thousand. Um, yes, everybody was hit hard. Nonprofits in particular are still being hit hard because yes, yeah, we are Sue, because a lot of funders, so a lot of fundings for nonprofits comes through grants. And those grants are being.
And those grants are being now um, sent or they're being applied more to homelessness, food insecurity, those types of things. So it's been more difficult in the last few years for nonprofits to receive that funding. And also same situation with often, you know, we we would ho- hold a uh, fundraiser as part of our, you know, our our money, and those were cutbacks very much in the last few years. We haven't been able to um, generate as much income from those.
I'm just saying it's a huge chunk from what we've ever done before. And will would we ever be able to do that again? And what what can she do different to going forward, I guess, as a as a nonprofit without relying on, I mean, if she, yeah. So there's just all kinds of questions there. So for me. And I twenty-five would be the most I would be comfortable with. So again, that's just my vote.
Um, for putting the numbers down sake, um, because we've heard fifty, we've heard more than twenty-five. I'll put down forty. I know some may agree with that, some may not. And this is something that's going to go back to council as well, and I think will be considered with other, you know, giving that is done. So I think there will have more of a lengthy conversation. I put down forty unless there's any strong objections on that and just will probably be coming back to it.
All right, I have forty in there. Next is Harbor Wild Watch for their uh, Scansy Visitor Cent- Information Center Operations. Thirty thousand dollar request this year, eleven thousand funded last year.
And I just put down fifteen. Um, do we fund that? We don't fund the other visitor center. It and I'm assuming it's still open at the chamber, correct? And Josh.
We don't fund it if we just, we give it to them rent-free, same as we do with the Scansy House.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So um, and the the it is kind of limited hours as far as a visitor center. But so I I just went with fifteen. I understand about volunteers. They're they're having a hard time getting volunteers. I just went with.
I I think this is a very strong tourism support system. They're right there in the middle of things and I fully support the full amount. I would even give them more, honestly. Because again, they're another organization that's providing a community service for tourism specifically, and they're operating at a deficit. So I mean, absolutely, I think they should get at least thirty thousand.
I would suggest twenty.
I can go with twenty.
I'm good with twenty as well. I I originally had, you know, I'm of course I'm swayed, right? We're all swayed by each other's comments and thanks. But I originally had fifteen and I I think we should come up a little bit there to twenty.
If we talk to them about being open on Sunday, I don't know. It's just, it's one of those things. Because I don't think the other visitor centers open even on Saturday and Sunday anymore. The chamber, it used to be on Saturdays, but I don't think it is.
So well, you know, consider this too, that there is a possibility that there could be an external service component that could be added to that visitor center if they have enough funding. So, you know, for example, if they can't be open on Sunday, there could be some other form of visitor interaction that provides information about. Well, you know, it used to be the paper, you know, rat card rack that was just available outside, um, whether it's a digital thing or something else. I mean, there are ways to serve people on other days if you're not open, if it's tourism based. So, yeah, and if they have the funding.
Okay.
I have that one at twenty then for now.
Right. And Josh, remind me, but I I don't think we heard from Key Fronza Farm Council.
No, I haven't had any follow-up from them since receiving their application. So they weren't, they have not met with the committee. Uh, we didn't fund them last year. I know they're they're located out on uh, the Peninsula and on the Gig Harbor area necessarily, so.
Well, I was curious to know if they, if we could fund outside of the collection area. And it looks like we can based on MRSC, but because they are first time uh applicant and they weren't here to present. I would be more inclined to go with about five thousand as opposed to ten thousand.
My my concern is if they didn't even present, um, and didn't reach out afterwards. I I I love the event. I've gone before. It's fun, but it's just you go from farm to farm. Um, so I I'm not comfortable if they didn't even present. So I would be okay not not funding them. Have we never have before, have we?
Is this the first year they've applied or have they applied in the past and not been funded?
This is the first year they've applied.
Okay, thank you.
So uh, Leona Lisa made a presentation today on Robin's Harbor Chat about this organ- this event. And it is apparent, I have not been to it, but apparently it's a two-day event.
I think it is both days. Hmm, I think it is. Well, I don't know. I don't, uh, maybe this year on Sunday, there was Saturday. I know it's Saturday for sure. I don't know.
This year, it's two two days.
Okay.
I could go a five thousand or seventy-five hundred. Any other thoughts there? Any other weight?
I could support five.
I could support five as well.
All right.
I can do five.
And then Josh, is this one, the One Love Foundation is that scratched since we didn't get?
Yeah, I did not hear anything from this organization. I don't think that this is a valid application that we can consider.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I I was hoping to hear back from somebody that could confirm that this was actually something that we could fund, but nothing, so.
Okay, and you tried reaching out to them again? Is that right? Okay.
I I've talked to the, I think it's the owner of Denegans, that's that actually filled out the application and he said he'd get back to me and I haven't heard anything.
Right.
All right, uh, Peninsula Art League, we've got two events, the Summer Art Festival and the Open Jury Show.
I would say five thousand, the full amount that they're asking for.
I would agree.
I agree. I would agree with that.
Yeah, me too.
I'd agree. I'd uh, agree on the the six thousand. They actually, you know, made a pretty good case between the two. Um, why one should be a little bit higher. So just to, not to speed us up there too quickly, but.
I had put four, so um, can we compromise at five?
Why, Sue? No.
Well, I can tell you, there's a lot of people that are coming in to see that show. So whether they stay overnight, I really don't know, but.
I wish they would, no.
Yeah, I know. Well, we do have, I mean, and there's there's actually artwork this year that's from, you know, Brooklyn, New York and Ohio. And so it it is quite an interesting uh, collection of entries. So, um, and it is nation nationwide. So it's it's good.
And it's at the museum, is that right? The my, yeah.
Yeah.
No, good, get them in.
Yeah, there's photography in the lobby and the paintings and sculpture are in the Special X Gallery.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right, so I have that one cut. Sorry. Have that one at six thousand? Is that where we're at?
Yeah, on this next one, just full disclaimer, I'll probably be pretty quiet on it, but I'm a board member with the permission to start Dreaming Foundation. I do think that they did a a great application and presentation, but I will leave it at that and let you guys discuss.
I would say twenty-five.
And I could go with twenty-five. It's a, it's the, you know, the three days and then the the swing brings in people and the the pole brings in a couple of people too. And um, so I'm comfortable with twenty-five.
I support the full amount.
I think I would support the full amount as well.
Well, I can do that too.
I can support thirty.
I would say thirty.
This is completely sidebar, but um, does does the permission to start being Dreaming Foundation ever work with the Veterans Day celebrant people?
Yeah, Pat said they did. Yeah.
Okay.
Hmm, and they do. Yeah. And then they do the the monthly path brings in a couple people every month that stay at the hotel too, that they do out on um, there's a camp. I can't think of the name of the camp. Seth will know where it is, but that's a six, six-day, seven-day every month. They'll start again in February. So the path program.
Hmm, cool.
So. Okay, thirty and then.
Down to our last one, Galloping Gertie.
And I put eighty-five. I just rounded it up to eighty-five on that one, so.
And we're all aware that that Rotary Club of Gig Harbor Foundation, it's actually the Rotary Club. Um, is it the evening or whatever it's called? It's not.
Gig Harbor North.
Foundation.
Oh, it's Gig Harbor North. Yeah, yeah. It's not a foundation?
It's not for the foundation because Rotary Club of Gig Harbor Foundation is the morning club. So Rotary Club of Gig Harbor is the morning club. So I think that but I think that on that part of the application, it said that the Gig Harbor North, so Josh, we're, you know this, don't you?
Yeah, we we're aware of this. Yeah, administratively, we will have to figure out who is going to be able to contract with us for this. Um, ultimately, we don't really care if it's Gig Harbor North or Gig Harbor Foundation, but someone will have to sign the contract. And when we figure out who that is, then we'll go forward, so.
So does Gig Harbor North not have a foundation affiliated with their club?
Not that I'm aware of, and that's that's something I need to work out with them.
Yeah.
Because the budget said Rotary Foundation of Gig Harbor North Club.
Yeah.
I think he also said that they were raising money for uh, programs that they do in schools in Guatemala and various places and for some international programming. So um, I don't know exactly how that is.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the amount or eighty-five hundred. I just think that it needs to make sure to go to what they're asking for.
Another piece of commentary, somebody mentioned it during their presentation, but they should actually pay homage to the bridge falling. So maybe moving it towards November, you know, off-season like Sue was mentioning. I know it's raining and that might may not favor a run, but it's for the bridge falling. So let's get it closer to that date. That would be my advice for them in the future.
Yes, that's great. I think Stephanie brought it up. Yeah, that's it. And for me, it's cooler, not always raining, cooler. See, there's positive.
Did we have a number here? Eighty eighty-five hundred?
I support eighty-five.
And I'm OK with eighty-five.
Same.
I'm good with that.
All right, well, let me just check my math here.
I've been doing it at the same time, Josh. Yeah, you're good. No way. What just happened? I'm off by five thousand. Where's that go? Let me, I'll go back and look at yours and check mine. Uh, I just created another tab from what I had earlier, so. I mean, it's a computer. It's way smarter and faster than I am, but I'm not finding where we're off.
I just want to say that I think that when you're looking at this number and we were talking with, you know, close to a million dollars to give out or I mean, if you look at what we spent last year at six-twenty and you were around that and you say we're bumping up to, you know, close to seven-twenty this set year. It, I mean, it's okay to go up a little bit. I just, this is, it's a bit frustrating that I feel like this is just the money or not, it just, um, it's going to continue to get the word out that this is an area to come to get money. And um, and I, and I completely get it that that's what we're here for, to to promote these, to bring business into Gig Harbor and and visitors into Gig Harbor. So but I think that maybe keeping it just this um, conservative going, you know, we're giving more than we did the year before, but we're not going and just giving a ton of money because it all was asked for. So that that was just my opinion.
It's it's wise that there's a surplus because to be frank, we need to cast a wider net. Like this is a reoccurring theme and group that we have here, but there needs to be, I think, a more diverse group of people that are ultimately hosting these events. Um, so you know, they can creatively creatively, uh, you know, getting in front of some of these people. I know that Laura last year kind of had that like weird egg hunt thing, which was, you know, it didn't go through, but uh, just, I think we need to get this out there and get other people involved. So having the additional funds going into the following year might really work in our favor if we can extend our reach, which I think is important.
Yeah.
I think something to consider too is, I mean, a a real critical view of the applications and how people intend to spend the funds. I mean, I think it's really important to look at that because um, some folks have fifty dollars in their marketing budget. And if we're trying to promote our events beyond, you know, thirty to fifty plus miles away, uh, fifty dollars isn't going to do it. So, you know, being being pretty judicious judicious about how we review the rent applications for maximizing the 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 reach at times when we need that reach. There are times of year that Gig Harbor doesn't really need a big reach. I mean, it's back there, uh, but there's other times when we do. So um, I think looking critically at that and and, you know, having a scoring rubric that actually awards something for happening in a time of year when we need the reach versus when we don't. So, you know, it's just food for thought.
Oh, that's that's good. And um, and getting another, don't, do we have just one collector opening still or two on the committee? Is it two, Josh?
There's one collector opening still, one collector and one receiver.
That we can't seem to, a one receiver too.
Yeah, and actually, we'll, we should probably acknowledge Jenny because she's uh, her her term is up this month.
This is my last month.
Yeah, Jenny, you've been with us a long time.
Yeah, a long time.
We'll miss you.
Thank you.
We will.
Got to stay in touch. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, always, so.
Hey, Josh, I did find the spot where I was off. So I just want to confirm, you're probably right, but I could have just missed it. It was on the Gig Harbor Yacht Club. I had had ten thousand down there to, does everybody remember? Is that fifteen?
Oh, but ten or fifteen on that one.
I had ten, but um, but I could have made an error, so I'm just going to ask in the group.
I think.
Fifteen, okay. All right, all good. We're we're checked out. Yeah.
That's pretty good. Hour and a half.
Okay. Um, well, let's do, let's do a formal motion on this, uh, what we've drawn up here and then I can take it to council and we'll go from there.
All right. Um, so does the committee, um, somebody from the committee or Josh, do I make a a motion?
Uh, anyone on, someone from the committee.
Okay.
I move that we um, accept the the amounts that have been agreed upon today, um, giving out this amount of money.
I'll second that as, and can we, what's that amount again? Seth or?
It's seven hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred dollars.
Okay, right there. Perfect. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. I feel like I'm the mayor right now. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstained. All right, sounds like it was all the votes for approved. So wow, all right. Well, that was a first for me. So thank you, guys, and entertaining my questions. I really appreciate your your feedback. And know that this can also be difficult, right? As, you know, as hotel owners, as, you know, as people that are involved in some of the nonprofits and those that are watching, um, appreciate you sticking around and listening and hearing. Hopefully everyone is very happy and pleased about what we have so far. Now, this isn't all guaranteed and promised as to go back to the council. Um, but wow, that was kind of, it was kind of fun. There were some difficult parts, but for the most part, it's kind of cool, you know, learning about all these different things and uh, also seeing what they want to do to grow and, you know, how they can better their org- organizations. So um, Josh, what else do we have to do? Do we have to motion to adjourn now?
Uh, that's where we're at.
Can I ask one? Would our next meeting be, Josh, is it now January?
Uh, it'll be December. It should be the second Thursday, December the eighth, I believe.
And I I have one last question. Uh, Josh, do you, do you see the the um, reimbursement requests that come in from grant, previous grants or current grants? And and I'm just curious. So here's my question is, all of these grants are reimbursable. So every organization that gets a contracted to provide these services has to submit their their reports and their receipts to get the reimbursement. I'm just curious, like, on average, does everyone uh, submit those reports and get the full reimbursement amount? Or is there a certain percentage that does a li- does a little less and asks for less?
Uh, I think for the most part, everyone gets the maximum that they're asking for. Um, I haven't processed the grants. Laura's been doing that up until this year. So this next round, um, I'll be doing them, but I haven't seen any come in for twenty twenty-two yet.
Okay.
Um, but my understanding is is that pretty much everybody is spending. Um, but my understanding is, is that pretty much everybody is spending enough to ask for reimbursement for the full amount.
Right.
The exception being twenty-twenty, when, you know, a lot of events didn't happen and there was some back and forth on what we would and would not fund, but.
Right, I know, yeah, we we forfeited five thousand dollars, I think, in, in.
Yeah.
We had been approved for. Great, thank you very much.
And we will be able to see those, I mean, if we could set up some kind of a, I don't know, schedule or something if they do, or if they're all due by February, where we could, just like you sent out the the grant request, you could send those out to us in the same way, so we could just give them a quick review um, for our own benefit, no for next time, is that possible?
Yeah, let me, I'll talk to Laura and see what she's done in the past, we're probably talking about several thousand pages of documents because we're scanning individual receipts, so I don't know if we can give you that much detail, but we can.
Yeah, just the summary, I.
Yeah, we can probably give you something, I mean, really, it's just, we're paying them what they ask for and then they submit their report on how many people they think came, but.
Yeah, the reports, I guess, is what we'd want to see, right? And the amounts, okay, thank you.
At least admit something to the state, um, to that effect, maybe we can just.
Yeah, we do.
Whatever gets submitted to the state, if that's not thousands of pages of documents, because.
No, that's.
I appreciate your time and I don't have much of it, so.
I want to do thousands of pages, but I think it's good, we need to be looking at what they do with it, how much, you know, to be good stewards of the next year's money, so. Great, thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a.
Motion to adjourn.
We're hungry, we're all hungry, we need.
Second, third, fourth, all right.
Okay.
Adjourned, thank you, everyone, really appreciate it.
Hi Jenny, we're gonna miss you, yeah, take care, thanks for all you've done, you're a good numbers person to have on here.